Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Sorry, we're technical difficulties getting setting it set up here. Thanks, everyone for joining us. Could someone tell me if you can hear us here? Because I can't hear them.
I can hear you.
Can hear you. We can hear you.
I think we are. We are ready to go. We have everything we need. The only thing that I haven't been sure of is when I start showing the presentation. I guess I'll be sharing my screen.
Yes.
Okay. All right. This is more technology than I normally deal with, so thanks, everybody, for being patient. Thanks for everyone who is here in the room tonight. Just to make sure that we are all on the same page. This is Manhattan Community Board Nine Housing Land Use and Zoning Monthly Meeting. I'm Liz Maitakis. I am the co-chair of H-Love along with Sydney Mortensen, who is not with us here tonight. We are doing double duty tonight. This is our monthly meeting, which we will. We will start and then we will go into a separate public hearing on a new application at 701 West 135th Street. So if you are here for our monthly meeting or you are here for the public hearing on 701 West 135th Street, you are in the right place. So with that, I believe we have two people from this committee in attendance. So I am one who called the meeting to attendance and not to orders. Anyone want to second that? Okay. Clayton, you were taking that. Great, so. Let's see, I need to. So that you can. I need to shoot my screen. Where I share my screen. So here's Audrey. Oh, there it is. Share screen. All right, good. So hopefully, everyone can see my screen now. That's one of the things hanging out in front of what I've seen. Can everyone online see my screen?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. So this is our agenda today evening. We will do introductions, then we will break into the public hearing for 701 West 135th Street. We will close out of the public hearing and then go into presentations. We will have a presentation by the Department of City Planning on the third round of City of Yes. And then is Cameron Clark here? Good to see you. And you're planning on doing the.
Follows.
Do we have any additional presentations, new business that is not on the agenda? With that, can I call to adopt this agenda? So a motion to adopt, adopt. Second, thank you.
Can we adopt?
What's that?
Can we not?
Can we adopt without? One, two, three, four.
So it's not like the form was blind committee only. But so, yes, so the public here for the meeting.
Thank you. Um. Meeting minutes, Clayton, we sent around or Sydney sent around our meeting minutes from last one.
I think the. Clayton was right about committee one was.
Okay.
So the fall hearing, we can do a little committee meeting.
And then we'll start the rest of it. Okay, works for me. All right, so with that, we are going to pause our regular monthly housing land use zoning meeting and open our public hearing for the Euler on 701 West 135th Street and 12th Avenue. I am going to stop sharing. I am going to find that presentation. Chip's fame.
So you're saying your screen?
Yes. Yep. Is it Neil?
Yes.
I was. I figured that out by now. All right, great.
Oh. Are you changed? And also, you see that's the condition?
If I can see my. I'm going to hit stop share. I'm just actually. Here. Share screen.
So that you can. Yeah.
So just leave it like this. It's cool. Okay, sorry for the technical difficulties.
My name is Neil Westlock from the law firm of Psych Bar Shaw. I'm here to read all on behalf of the owner of 701 West 135th Street, who are seeking rezoning, tech amendment, and a special permit. We've been working with the community board pre-pandemic. We probably, I think in 2018, we originally appeared before the committee with a proposal for a 14-story building. And the community board would not support that. We went back to the drawing board and reduced the height of the building to the height of Riverside Drive to not block views from Riverside Drive. Your committee approved that in formal recommendation in 2019. And it's taken us a while in the pandemic, but we finally got certified. And this, I'll show you as we move on, talk about what we're seeking and with a proposal, we've constructed it. Next slide, please. So 701 West 135th Street is located on the intersection of West 135th Street and 12th Avenue. It's a 12,000 square foot lot and it's approved with a two-story and unfortunately, it's a three-story commercial building, which has a history of failed tendencies. The site has actually been vacant since 2018. And that was the primary driver of seeking rezoning for residential use. Next slide, please. The site is currently located within an M1-1 manufacturing district. And the proposal is to rezone the area to an R7-2 residential district. And there's some other actions that we're going through, where we believe the use is appropriate with the many adjacent residential leases on Riverside Drive and with the rezoning of the special Manhattanville District from years back now, also permit residential leases. Next slide, please. There are a number of actions involved with this application. One is convert is to amend the zoning map to an M1-1 manufacturing district to an R7-2 residence district within a C2-4 commercial overlay. The area also will be mapped as a mandatory inclusionary housing area, which requires some 20, between 20 and 30% of the unit to be affordable. They'll talk about it at the end. This also requires a special permit because it's adjacent to a railroad right of way. And we also seek an amendment to the special Manhattanville mixed-use district as an other area. And the reason for this is to create a new special permit in the special Manhattanville mixed-use district to allow the waiver of both requirements other than floor area ratio. And this application seeks a rear yard and lot coverage waiver. Next slide, please. The proposal is a seven-story, 53,000, approximately 53,000 square foot resident mixed-use building. With the building will not exceed a height of 71.5 feet to match the height of Riverside Drive. The building will also contain 7,450 square feet of brown for retail and 689 square feet of community facility space. The proposed building will contain 60 dwelling units, of which 15 to 18 will be constructed pursuant to the mandatory inclusionary housing program. And they will be affordable for certain households, and I have a chart the end of the table explained. Next slide, please. This is a view from the West Side Highway. The proposal is the camp believer over the Amtrak tracks on the six and seven stories. The building will contain 30 studios, 26 one-bedrooms and four two-bedrooms. And this is due to the narrow width of the site and it will primarily be studio and one bedroom. Excitement. So the first act, it is converting many zoning map from an M1 to an R72 to a C2 for commercial district. In the, under the current zoning M1-1 residences are not permitted. So the proposed rezoning would permit residences. And the area will also be mapped within a commercial, within a mandatory inclusionary housing area. The maximum FAR floor ratio within the R72 is a 3.6 within 100 feet of West 135th Street and portion of 12th Avenue. What is the maximum there is 4.6. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, there is also a special permit required due to the location of the site adjacent to the railroad right of way. A special permit allows city planning to allow city area to be used for residential use. Next slide, please. In order to obtain both waivers due to the narrowness of the site for lot coverage and rear yard, the proposal is to create a special permit within the special Manhattanville mixed-use district. And in order to do so, the special Manhattanville mixed-use district must be extended over the site. And there's a small portion which will be called an other area. And there's two other areas within the special Manhattanville mixed-use district already. Next slide, please. We believe the proposed action is appropriate and consistent with various goals in the special Manhattanville mixed-use district, including to bring life to this one stagnant going lot and create a landscape modern urban design to recognize and promote the historic infrastructure of the neighborhood and also its location adjacent to Riverside Park and near the proposed academic mixed-use areas makes this use appropriate. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, the special hand mixed-use district is extended to create a special permit to allow city planning to modify both regulations other than floor area. And the above the first story of proposed development, a 30-foot rear yard is required under the zoning, but due to the narrowness of the site, this would make the building infeasible. So the applicant seeks a special permit to modify the rear yard requirements as well as lot coverage of 65% and the applicant seeks that waiver of lot coverage as well. Next slide, please. This slide is given the maximum building height as lines that was designed to line up with the height of the retaining wall adjacent to Riverside Drive, so the building will not exceed 71.6, 71.5 feet. And the other area above that is the pole pad, which only occupy a small portion of the site. Next slide, please. These are just floor plans if you want to go through. But this is the ground floor, which will contain three commercial spaces, or excuse me, four commercial spaces, then a small community facility as well as the trash room and a bike room. Next slide, please. This slide just shows the second, third, and fourth floors. Next slide, please. And as the site can't believe it's over the six and seven floors, the footprint gets a little wider. And that's the ultimate typical, that is the fifth floor. And next slide, please. And as I mentioned, the area will be a mandatory inclusionary housing area. There are three options that a applicant may take advantage of. And we're looking for input from the community board, which they prefer. But option one is that 25% of the floor area or 15 units shall be provided so that the average of all income bands don't exceed 60% of the AMI in the area. And at least 10% must be affordable with an income span of AMI of 40% and no income band shall exceed 130% of AMI. Option two is providing more units, approximately 18, but the average income from all income bands will not exceed 80%. And it also doesn't have that 40% requirement of AMI. And then there's also the deep affordability option, which requires less units, 12 units. But the average for all income bands will not exceed 40%. And the bottom part of the chart shows that for a 40% AMI, depending on the family size, for example, a family of two, the 40% AMI makes $49,720 a year. And for 130%, which no income band will exceed a family of two, has a income band of 100, think of $161,590. And just understand for 40%, family thinking 40% of AMI, studio would rent for $1,087, one bedroom for $1,165 and for two bedroom, $1,398. I'm here with the architect as well here in hand. He had to answer any questions that the committee or the board may have.
Before we go into questions. You have an architect here?
Yes.
Do you have anything you want to add before we go into questions?
No, you'll.
All right, great. All right, so I do have more notes on tonight's procedure. So I'm just going to read through these officially for the record and then we will go through questions. So we are currently under community board review of the proposals that last 60 days. And it's time for the community board to gather information and to submit our response in a timely manner. This recommendation from the community board is then sent on to the borough president and then our local city council member and DCP as an advisory resolution from the board to help them reach a decision on whether to allow this text amendment and rezoning purpose. So we will now, people who have questions, we will start with Community Board Nine Housing Land Use and Zoning Committee, other Community Board Nine board members. If you have questions or testimonies, you're allowed two minutes each. I will try to keep count of everything. If there is anyone who, if there is an elected official that's with us online or representative from an elected official, you can go next with two minutes each. And then public questions and testimonies, you're allowed one minute each. And then after that, we will review and discuss the resolution and we will vote. Everyone who is here either in person or online, we, we want everyone to vote. So we will go through a couple of different rounds of voting and we will collect all of those responses. If you are online or here, you should have received either a digital form or here tonight, there is a paper form to either ask a question or to submit official feedback. If you submit the form with the feedback, that is part of the public record. And we will submit that along with our resolution when we, when we get that. What else did I miss? If you're on Zoom, raise your hand. Or in reactions, press star nine. I just wondered how Sydney remembered all this. If you're calling in from a phone to be acknowledged in between paper forms. Can you manage that part of the?
Yes, we make it.
I gotta make you a host. How to do that? We went over time limits. We'll come back to the online feedback form again at the end just to provide additional clarity and the timing on when to get those. So let's start with Housing Land Use and Zoning Committee or board member feedback in the group.
I have a lot of questions.
Very.
Is, so this lot was split, I believe, by the prior real team. And it looks like the proposal would require acquisition of land and rights from the remaining lot to the west of.
No, there's no, is it the tax lot? Is the zoning lot when it was subdivided, I think in 2008? There's no acquisition involved. There's no zoning law merger involved. It'll solely be on lot 58.
So your.
Your development, a lot, a lot six, a portion of lot 60 that extends to the edge of the railroad right of way, it's part of the rezoning. But there is no development on that. We don't have control of that. And city planning also wanted us to rezone to the midline of 12th Avenue. That's, it's a tax lot, it's part of line of lot 55. But the development is solely on lot 58. You're right, though, that lot, portion of lot 60 and the alley are part of the project here for the rezoning. But there will be no development on lot 60 and no zoning property.
Okay. The second question is about the so-called failed tendencies. One of the concerns that we have is that the last tendency was terminated at the decision of the property owner. And that was a well-like Italian restaurant down at Bolbo, who still operate a restaurant elsewhere in the neighborhood. And the space was then leased. And then shortly after the lease, the street collapsed. And the electricity and gas shut off. So I guess one question for us is, you know, does the motivation here, because this space can't be leased for commercial manufacturing, is that an artifact of the street collapse or indicative of a market reality?
So even before the street collapse, we brought this application to city planning. And as I understand it, even though there was a restaurant, I think there was a default and there wasn't, there was some dispute between the owner. But the fact was that it wasn't making money with the performing commercial use. And they believe that residential use is legally appropriate. So that's really what drove it. And then city planning wanting and city council and the mayor's office wanting more housing and affordable housing, we thought it was appropriate action to bring.
And. Sorry, I'm trying to remember my turn here. The, how did the, how did the property owner, the developer come to own property with two procreation and purchase? I am not sure. It's very complicated, this story. And then, so your environmental review indicated that the site would need to be deemed hazardous, which would require mitigation efforts because of the proximity to the highway and the railroad. Can you talk a little bit about what that hazardous finding is and what those mitigation efforts entail?
So fortunately, our environmental consultant can be here, but I think some of the designations before development didn't occur. It hasn't clearly are uncovered, it will have to be cleaned up before the residential could be built. And I know that there is some sound contamination to the windows and certain types of HVAC equipment needs to be used. But is this going before the full word on Thursday? Because I can have, or is this the?
Yes.
So I can have the environmental consultant.
Although we don't, we have 60 days.
Yeah, I don't know from what, no.
Right, well, this is the first.
The other question is Amtrak. Amtrakers have indicated that they have not approved this and they were a little bit attachedy about kind of the fact that you were passed to go on without, in their, in their consultation. Can you just speak to what exactly the conversation been, that has been and you've talked to and their concerns?
So I spoke to Amtrak a couple of weeks ago, they actually reached out to me when they heard that this was going on. We originally engaged Amtrak and in order to gain their proper approvals of whole set of plans that had been designed, big engineering costs. And so we determined that if this gets approved by you and city planning and city council, that that's when we'll draw up the plan and obtain Amtrak's approval for the camp believing and struggling adjacent to the railroad right of way. If that approval doesn't happen, then we can't build the building. But I wasn't in touch with them two weeks ago.
Okay. And was that their engineering team returning?
So just to be clear, Amtrak have not signed off on the project. They understand that you're moving forward.
Yes. They can't sign off until there's a thorough engineering detail planned. And that's a big expense. So if we didn't get city planning approval, it wouldn't have been worth, that's why.
So theoretically, if this is approved by, by the city council, then you would move forward with full engineering.
Yes.
And then Amtrak would make their determination.
That would be the next step, is dealing with, not even dealing with the university department buildings. We'll need Amtrak approval. Bill Karen, do you want to add something?
Yeah, I just want to chime in. We were with, in communication with Amtrak before the partners' planning regarding clearances for the training tracks for the building camp believer. It's just in a slow process to approval before we do that.
Why, any of those conversations?
And then I know I'm taking up a lot of time here, but I have a lot of questions.
At least 10 minutes here.
So it's in a fun zone. Can you just talk about? So it's in a flood zone, can you just tell me how um the development?
Karen, you, you can why not come up here and talk about mitigation. And just so everyone understands, there was, the reason that it took so long, basically the environmental review. We planned it for almost two years, looking at the revising the environmental assessment statement. To satisfy, to make sure that all mitigation is proper and. Yeah, here in the end, just for the areas.
Yeah, so basically what we had to do was a design flood elevation, which is a certain percentage above base flood elevation. So essentially, like, the first floor is raised about one foot above the base flood elevation. Has interior ramps in the buildings and have a combination of wet flood roofing and. And utilities also raised even higher.
Yeah, well, the flood plain down there is pretty high.
Yeah.
I mean, I have pictures of it flooding down there during any of the big storms that we've had, so I have the picture up on here. Is, does that show the building raised?
Yeah, so what we did, we did interior ramps stairs, so the actual entry doors are outside the grade. But once you enter the lobby of a commercial building, residential building, um you'll see interior ramps stairs.
Yeah, both ones, yeah, there's the new bottom, yeah.
And is that what is required from the city in terms of?
Next slide.
Yeah, I mean, this is one of the means to mitigate flooding issues.
So like I say, I didn't say.
And. This building will be subject to this local law eleven. Terms. How, I mean, my building has done that recently, and so I'm just wondering, how does that work to an overhang over ramp?
So I believe, I'm not sure if the rear of the dome, but I mean, well, whatever it is, we're gonna have to work with Amtrak. To make sure that we can have access either from the roof, it's gonna be repaired, or the drop down scaffold, or. Or crane, but I would think it's gonna be some of those, a lot of building to that in the rear.
And, and then the historic, the preserving, historic transportation infrastructure, what, what, what was that connected to?
So just the location here, you, if you walk north on twelve avenue, one hundred thirty eighth street. You're back to Broadway, you busted in the subways, and if you walk up Riverside Drive, you'll also back to the possible.
Oh, so that's about transportation, the residence, not about historic preservation?
Right, they, 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 preservation here, that was kinda. Liden the area and make this site residential building.
Alana, well, that was my question, was, you know, how Amtrak, because I mean, this pretty much hinges, I mean, I understand. The expense that the tintings on there eventually will improve or just.
Yes, we can't, can't get around.
So have they mentioned specific concerns at, at this present stage or in the past? Or that will come later to these?
No, we, we had preliminary discussions, and they were based on a rough set of plans and they. In our opinion, whether they approve it or not, they thought it was doable. And with the understanding that we have to come back to them, a full set of plans and detailed conversation with the engineering teams and. Figure out how this can be constructed.
And should the, the tracks are flush with the kick from the guy with the logic against the.
Yes.
So that, that's part of that, what the tracks, it's all flat, that's right up against.
The train will go right on the.
But I mean, it's right there, right up against.
The columns for the tracks run through the existing buildings, they've been tied together.
And we did ask that there are, there are buildings that with Amtrak renovation that have similar. Maybe not in New York City, but this is not a brand new.
Right, I was gonna ask, have you studied similar uh any other examples where? Uh, train, I mean, I know that there are elevated platforms throughout the city where there's residential right next to it, so have you studied that? What?
We feel confident that this can work, that there is the material to make it work, building, material.
I got a question for the environmental review, because I know they do a lot of research, uh, that's much on the impact of sanitation.
So, right, I had another part, so just given the temperature. What's going on in the world, the nation, I mean, if you're question minded, I actually, not me that I knew, but. I would introduce a little more, and the tracks, tracks, not only Amtrak, we know the tracks, right? There's also a lot of chemicals, uh, they are transported, I can get nine, it's actually wrong, and I. Everyone's river down, I know. Uh, the tracks used to transport chemicals, I'm pretty sure this is standard operation in this country.
It's, so this came up also with city planning.
Oh, did.
Uh.
Chemicals and the Amtrak about free.
Free.
Um, and also. For the ball, um. It's uh basically a container, a shipping container that's on the platform. That also, nice question.
How, speaking of environmental consulting, on Thursday, I didn't.
Like CSX, you know, they, they, they're, and I'm working just around it, you know, just, and other things that I wanna mention going on, which maybe be concerned about. Open mind concern about what's happening.
Okay.
Thanks, Alana, anyone else in the room, probably community board? Uh, work from, I mean, this is, I mean, any question?
Right, um, so what is, this is more my personal, we have multiple uh options. Uh, do you, like, are, are you the developers?
So city council actually has the authority to choose which option you want, they typically limit it to two, either deportability and option one. Or get rid of deportability, so we're gonna work with the city council, but your committee or board has preference. We can relandact to, to our room.
Okay, yeah, so it seems good, because we've had a lot of conversations with. Other question, maybe this is like part two, like, are there some big plans? Um.
This is not, but this is Am, so the Amtrak, so it's, it's, like, this is the.
It's like on the end of the website, like, we have the next.
Not for, not these tracks, Metro North doesn't run on these tracks.
No, 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 so this is phase two or two B of the um. What they call metro.
Penax, Penax.
Yeah, so they're going to be running, I think, replacing Spike and Devil Bridge and running Metro One trains. Adding a station. Some of the park.
Like on these tracks, the part on these, I was, I was aware of that, but that will all go into Amtrak approval.
Yeah, 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 that's, that's part of the today's published. A little more time about city.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, anyone else on the board with a question, first, Karen.
Yeah, listen, that, oh, I'm back, yes. I don't have a question, I have been on this door for, I think, thirteen years now. I've lived in the neighborhood for fifteen, seventeen years. I think I've all paid this time to come to this door. With this project, it's been, it's been starting in the beginning, telling the, this is a city now, this is. All the place to build a little bit. And here, I thought it was much, a water, no, let's see, the chickens.
That's it, thanks, Annette. Feedback. Um, so let's go to um, anyone online from the community board. Uh, with a question, please raise your hand, I think I'll be able to see you.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I need you both, I started looking at chat, okay. Um, and I see that someone here is from um the borough president's office. So Sean, if you have anything. Any questions on the presentation?
I have no questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right.
So one of the questions was how close will the trains use the exterior wall of the building? And will there be a window bill on that exterior wall?
There's no windows on the, only on the seventh and eighth floor, the fourth, fifth and seventh floor, of course, the cantilevers.
Yeah, and then to you have a drawing, you know, this drawing doesn't show, there looks like there's a gap between. Is there a gap there?
There's a small gap, I mean, I think we can try to take measurements, survey would show that for Thursday. Yeah, I can be able to.
Like, what is the difference between this elevation and? It's.
I just need to follow the tracks, jump from the wall to the.
Yeah, all, it also, without that metal railing is.
Well, if, if the, if the supports for the elevated platform are getting to the building, presumably it's gonna be.
Flush.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then where, um, so I guess I'll, I'll ask you questions. Uh, where is the highway?
The highway is, you know, west.
Right. And this is right where the on-ramp is. So you go under the highway at one thirty fifth. And then the ramp sort of curves east and up.
Did you, the area map on the top? Yeah, keep going, it's one of the first slides, that colored one. So this kinda shows, here's the site, here's the parkway. And if it's, I don't have a hearing view, but. Bring one maybe on, back from the highway.
Yes.
Yeah. Um. Yeah, I would just be interested in, I mean, I guess it's, yeah, the, the railroad tracks separate the um on-ramp from the building. Um, but people do like to drive crazy on the west side.
The west side, it isn't really near the site, I mean, near the site, but it's not adjacent to the site.
Yeah, the tracks.
Right, the tracks are in between, but people have been known to fly off the west side.
Well, with that.
Quite literally. Last year.
Under the tracks?
Uh, no, all the way and down onto the. Driving way too fast. Um, so my question's, um, very ask a lot of them, but my question. On the requested actions, just for clarity, there are, there are six requested actions. And so we are to provide comment at a minimum for these six actions. So the change from M one one to R seven two.
Yeah.
Um, an amendment to the text of the pending F F. Um, to create mandatory inclusionary housing in the area. Um, a special permit to allow for the development over a railroad right of way. So is this a permit for this project or? The city, has, has city ever done this before?
Yeah, there's a special permit, whenever you construct a right of way. It is not a right of ways, city planning, with such a permit.
Um, amendment to our text chapter four pending A. Adding the project area as other area within the Manhattan district use.
So that's done, so city planning wanted to not have the citywide waiver for sites next to railroads. So only in the special Manhattan district, if you're located next to a railroad right of way. They only within the special Manhattan district, district, can you seek waivers for both. Not if they are, but for lot coverage and rear yard, it's what we're seeking. So it's putting this site in the special Manhattan, it's, use district. Creating a special permit to modify the lot coverage and rear yard requirements, the amount to the site, and then seeking that special permit. So it's one, two, three, add.
All of them, yes, permit.
Well, just to get the bulk weight.
Um, and then the amendments, oh, that's the full, next one.
Right, so they create the special permit and then you're seeking a special permit.
So these, these three things are. Uh.
All of this, I'm trying to construct.
So it's essentially. Four. Um, are there any other questions? Or any other question you would want to?
Yes, I, I.
Go ahead.
Um, and I guess this was sort of in reference to some of the different options for an editorial decision. Um, and you know, I, I guess, you know, obviously there's a couple of different options, city council. Uh, I was wondering if, as the developer, if it's, well, it's sort of, you know, voluntary, you know, these are four. If it's for voluntary seating, some of these amendments, you know, in terms of the.
So New York City just adopted a new four week on exit clause, absolutely. Supplements are, continues with four twenty one eight, I don't know if you know about that, so it's a tax, it's like. And the developer most likely doesn't use that, and that requires deportability. And those, those AMI also require you can't have income band of one hundred thirty. Where, under AMI, mandatory inclusionary housing, no income band can exceed one hundred and thirty AMI. But under the four eight five X, no income band can exceed a hundred percent for certain buildings. So there is some deeper affordability.
It's, it's that, I know, I know MIH is, probably not affordable, it's the.
Probably not affordable as well, for a big. Yes, the tax exemption isn't twenty five years, twenty five, thirty years, but the rents themselves.
It's that, it's that you have proposal around like, how, there's no like, these options aside, it's or.
So we will definitely lower the income bands that are, will be renting these apartments. But that the, right now, it's providing an inclusionary housing and that type.
And it's, you have like, like any proposal, you just sort of wait for, for feedback from, from.
The current proposal, what the developer likes to do, the option one, which is the twenty five percent affordable housing. Which also is in line with the forty five X proposal, which would be accept the, the whole eighty nine, see a hundred percent AMI. Where a vendor manager, you know, the hundred and thirty percent, so rent for. You may vote on it.
Okay, any other questions, and then, is anyone online? Um, I see, uh, is it Basia has raised their hand? Well, then that's your question.
Basia. Yeah, hi, this is Basia, yes, I'm online. Um, I actually put into the chat a bunch of questions. Um, one of the main ones, and I'd really appreciate if you could go through the questions in the chat, because I'm not the only one that's put them in there. I think one of my most uh, uh. Urgent questions is you repeat that it's the seven stories high, but I'm. Extremely skeptical as to what the view would be from the extremely cherished. Community. Space that's as a park patron on one thirty fifth street and Riverside Drive. It's pretty much the only unobstructed view of the open river that we have. In our community, because everything else is obstructed by either the sewage treatment plant. Or the defunct sanitation transfer station. And when you say seven. And when you say seven stories, and in, I think, one of the articles, there was this quite. Deceiving, uh, side view. Um, I'd like you to please address the actual view that a park patron goer would experience. At one thirty fifth street or one thirty fifth and a half street. Um, looking west. Because it would seem to me that with the roof in, roof infrastructure and potentially solar panels and other things. That that's actually going to become basically a wall. And take away this really prized, unique to our neighborhood space, which is already. Overloaded with environmental justice concerns, and then just taking this away as well as the sunlight and the wind flow from the river. At a time when our city is going to be increasingly undergoing urban heat. So I was hoping you could address, um, those questions about the impact. On a parkgoers' experience at one thirty fifth street, and also whether the environmental review actually took into consideration. Any of the shading and the wind blockage that would be, you know, created by essentially a thin, narrow wall. Building.
So the proposal was that this was the certain government that the height of the building will not exceed the height of Riverside Drive. Except in this picture, you could see a bulkhead, but that bulkhead is just shown, does not span the entire building, it's only for. How, why would you say the bulkhead?
Uh, probably, I mean, it's only just like through that tree.
So there's only this ten foot bulkhead, the remainder of the building above seventy one and a half feet will not contain any obstruction. The environmental assessment statement, yes, did study shadows, the extensive study of shadows. And on Thursday, I will have a consultant here to talk to that. I'm not sure about the wind study. But I will find out, and if there's a way you can. Here on Thursday, answer that question. Or environmental consultant can answer that question, or we can put that in writing and the community board can share that with the constituents.
So just to clarify, looking at this picture, I see underneath the tree is a little person, but it looks like they're literally looking at. A solid piece of building across going west, am I incorrect?
Yeah, you're incorrect, the height of the building is the exact grade of Riverside Drive. When you're standing there, you'll be seeing above the building other than the ten foot bulkhead. That, that will be blocked from your sight, but the building is, will not exceed the height of Riverside Drive.
Right, but that.
For items like that, so the person.
There's no person.
I don't think there is.
That, 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 that wall. Which are showing two things, this person here.
Well, I don't. Photographing, there's a little bit. I think you're saying.
Then the parking wall of Riverside Drive.
Right, that, that's what it looks like to me, uh, I think they're saying this, this image that they're, uh.
Well, yeah, you can see the bulkheads.
Yeah.
But above the height of the bulkheads, and if the community board. Doesn't want trees on the rooftop, then that's something that. Does not have to be controlled. You're looking for a clear view.
Perhaps it would be helpful to also provide on Thursday some, uh. Image, uh, what are they called, you know, visualizations of what it would look like from a park patron's point of view. Um, on one thirty, one thirty fifth street looking west, I think that would be helpful to just help everybody understand what a bulkhead view actually is.
Okay, well, try to put that together.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Basa. Um. So I see, uh, Gabrielle has her hand raised, go ahead with your question, you have one minute.
Ah, yes, um, I'm just gonna piggyback on what Basa said. Um, I, I think the, I'm wondering if there's a better view that we could see, because this building starts at one thirty fifth. And Riverside, but goes, the length of it seems to stop close to one thirty seventh street. And the park, the Riverside Park. And Riverside Drive north of one thirty fifth street actually slopes down. So your side view seems to be the highest point of Riverside Drive. But from there, the, the whole walk slopes down, and it would seem that this building would be very visible. Blocking what is a, a view of the river for many people who use the park. So I'm wondering if you could provide some renderings, or even maybe you have them, not in the slideshow, of that view. Because I think that's the view most people are concerned with.
Yeah, we'll try to.
And just looking at the picture now, I remember thinking that before that, uh, there, there, there was stuff in this, uh, if this was a, a realistic rendering. You would be able to see, um, Riverbank Park and the, um, the waste transfer station that sits right like there's. Like you can see the, the water in this view on the left-hand side, and I don't think that's accurate. Riverbank is there. Like if you were standing on twelfth avenue in this.
Lot of talk in the rendering.
There's definitely more stuff there that you would see, for sure.
Okay, there, there, there's the thing.
Yeah, this is, this rendering is not, is like, uh, if you had demolished. It doesn't exist. And it's much more, I mean, it would be in the back of, you know, there would be no blue sky.
It's already obstructed, even without the building.
Uh, well, I don't know, this is not here.
Yeah, like, for example, looking north, or the bridge, you would be able to see the bridge, it's giant.
Right, you would be able to.
And, and yeah, I think.
It's like, when you come, when you come under, so, yeah, you can connect to, um, the, the path, the bike path, either under, under the, um, tracks. Or you go straight forward towards the former transfer station, and then you get on to go south. And there's the parking lot there, and there's all the entrance to Riverbank from right above.
We'll see.
I mean, I know it'll cloud up this pretty rendered, but to see it accurate would be. Of the buildings. Yeah, I know, it's probably a lot of. If there is. Oh, yeah, you can see all that stuff here. So all the stuff in the water is missing. All purple.
Okay, I understand, I understand.
Is missing. Yeah. Okay, well, if there are no other questions, uh, back to my trustee notes, um, so we are going to, uh. Uh, end our questions and testimony, but.
Oh, I'm sorry, there are questions, I have a question that hasn't been addressed, it's in the chat, it's about the air quality for the residents of. Proposed building, has that been studied? So like, you know, what conditions, living conditions are you proposing for somebody who's already choosing to live in a flood zone? And over some Amtrak tracks? What kind of air quality is going to be, you know, proposed for the folks living there? Are we just perpetrating, uh, environmental justice issues or?
This environmental review took almost two years working with city planning, and there was. Air quality, shadows, noise, in-depth studies and. He was issued a negative declaration by the Department of City Planning, meaning that there are no negative adverse impacts. But I will have the environmental consultant here on Thursday to speak, or if they can't be here, I'll make sure I get all these questions answered.
Is that document, the environmental review available?
Yes, the environmental system thing, it is, it's on the, on the city.
Oh, it's on Zap. Okay, um, Basa, I can, if you know where that is, um, we can, we can, um, make that acceptable to everyone who will attend.
City planning continue to come back to us with Tom's twenty five and a half over here, everything is thoroughly studied.
I, I know, I know where it is, it's on the Zap portal. Um, for anyone who knows how to get to the New York City app.
Zoning application.
Zoning application portal, and then you would just do the pull down menu for community board nine. And you'll see that this is the only you learn currently active, and then there are a series of, um.
Public documents.
Public documents and, and they're all in there.
Click on public documents and then click on E A F of the latest E A F.
Um, so, uh, and we're, we're gonna take one more question, um, and then we're gonna, um, move on to review and discussion. So, um, Lori, go ahead, you have your hand up.
Hi, thanks, I'm just curious how high the bulkheads are.
Eighty sixteen, I believe.
Say that one more time.
I'll get an exact number for Thursday.
Fifteen feet above the roof.
Fifteen feet. Fifteen.
Correct. We'll confirm that on Thursday.
Pretty deceiving.
Nothing, nothing has been, anything on the drawings are accurate.
I know, but you're just saying it's the, the height of Riverside Drive, but fifteen feet is really deceiving, um, on that image, I'm sorry.
That is high point, and there's the rendering, that's the two areas of the bulkhead, but we'll get the exact.
Yep.
Um. There was a question in the chat about Jenny's garden, and she said the one thirty eighth street that the kind of dog like where it's walk down.
But yeah, you'd be able to see that.
The question, do you have this chat study to be presented, or that was presented at, um. At this evening commission?
It's part of the environmental assessment statement? Yes.
Okay.
Okay, um, so we are, I'm going to. Um, please mute yourself, we're gonna move forward with the, on the rest of, um, of this, uh, special session. Um, we're gonna move on to, um. Uh, review and discussion, I will just say before we move on. Um, if you do have additional questions, questions, um, or you would like to make an official, uh, statement. Um, please use the online feedback form, um, you can submit your question tonight, tomorrow. You have until May thirtieth, twenty twenty four, uh, to submit that online feedback form to us. Um, all of the feedback that's collected will be, um, attached to, uh. You're texting me, stop texting me while I'm trying to do this, um. All of your, um, public feedback will be, um, uh. Submitted as a package with our, um, our resolution, so you have, again, until May thirtieth, uh, to submit your questions and, uh. Okay? All right. So with that, um, we are going to, um, so you two gentlemen can sit down, thank you so much.
So I'll sneak forward a presentation for Thursday, since we.
Yes, yes, Thursday. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So. Discussion and review from, uh, committee members, uh, community board members. Looks like our task at hand is, um, responding to these, uh, requested actions, but. I think Clayton brought up the point about responding, um, to, uh, mandatory inclusionary housing. Thoughts?
The MIH component is accurate, the forty percent AMI. In the option three, I think, for mandatory housing is in fact the real median income for community board nine. Um, so those rents, which if we zoom in a bit, you can see a thousand per studio, fourteen fifty for a one bedroom. And two thousand per two bedroom are considered affordable to the median family. And, and so, you know, the, the fake AMI, which includes Rockland County, Westchester, is way higher than that, but forty percent of the. Official federal AMI is in fact our fair median, so that is a, um, that is a good number. Um. That being said, I still think it's not a good site for residential development.
Right. Um, and that?
Yes.
Any additional comment, um?
If there is a guy. Which you all know there is. He, he got what he did, project. You know, it does not need the need of this community, it's not helping bar. The only way is for the developer. It looks funny to their property, no one else in the community will watch this project. Yeah, yeah, there's just no nicer way to say, no, please, send over.
So, and then what makes this project, because I just want to be clear from both housing land use and zoning. That we do not oppose development and additional. So what, can I ask you what in your mind makes this project?
What bothers me as joining on with the organization from the time of seven years ago, that's called Avenue Bar. It's just wonderful, you know, the same ball, it's not the same, it's not for residential living. Now, if we want to win something, they have those businesses, they have been built on. Why don't we do that in service? We're in, this is a community board, and we're talking about the community. And so community set, and it cannot be this whole, it happens affordable, we need housing. Yes, we need housing, but can we put in desire expectation? Um, can we not disrupt the whole community, um, in building this housing? We have to, that building on the corner extending up, the views are supposed to be obstructed. It dismantles a lot. And the benefit is, like, who wins here? Do we really win? We don't win, the developer wins. And the fact that this gentleman with his good intentions has been before this board for how many times? Just said, it doesn't need.
Yeah.
But. You know, the developers are in business, they pay their money, so who comes? Do you want to consult? My law, say the deal, we won it.
Can I respond though? When we came back the second time, visually, it was a fourteen story building. We came back the second time with this proposal, we can really formally approve, that's why we proceeded. We did not turn it down the second time, this is third time we're here. The second time, that's why we moved forward. We were in bowdown, it was, it was invasion purposes only, like, let's support it.
I don't, I, I mean, I was here for that meeting, I, 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 we didn't support it. Absolutely, yeah, we supported it, yeah, yeah, you were here, you were here, you were here.
We didn't.
He said earlier that it was two or three, because the recommendation was from a shorter building, that's the same thing as. Right, can you tell me when that was, just so we can go back and check it out?
I'll have to pick up a back or not.
Yeah, it was before the pandemic.
Yes, I haven't, like. It was, I was at the prior firm, so. I wanna see twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, but, and then. I wasn't imagining this, if the community board didn't want, because the council member at the time, or the president, the. He wouldn't have supported the application, the community didn't support it, so we came back the second time, we did get, get formal. Green light, and that's why we're here today. We wouldn't have gone through all this, on the second meeting, the community board still been.
This community, you can sit here and say that the only reason why we're here. Want, we wanted, we aim for, this is not a project. Close for.
Well, did say close for, but we.
Your developer wants to make money. Your development wants to make money. Have a lot. And this is why you're here. You're not here in a sense truly legally to the community. If you were to go home, people that live in this small community and ask, do we want that building there? They tell you no. They will tell you no. And I know it's not what you want here, but it is the true fulfillment. Now, don't mean to be mean.
That's what you left for. No, I wasn't saying that. I was saying that we came back the second time. The community board in the garden, we said, I'm not gonna say issue of recommendations, but we're amenable to the project and that's why we proceeded. But I guess we don't want to say that we got turned down and we said whoever we're gonna be in the report. But I will try to find the basis.
Hold on, so I remember when they first approached the committee, like when I was just started on the community board, I think it was like seventeen or eighteen. We were against it. I didn't ever remember any of us being, whether we all had the same concerns that we have now back then. But I I wanna just interject with my own thoughts about just the potential development for the site. Um, I'm I'm all for four thousand. I'm I'm not that. I live in four thousand houses. It's the only way I was able to stay in the city that I grew up in. So I'm for four thousand. However, I'm not for this candle lever. I'm not for, I can't wholeheartedly sign off on this only being residential. But if something happens in terms of the concerns that I've mentioned, however, in terms of redeveloping the site, you know, we have a lot of small businesses that wanna get started in this community that can't because rents are so high. How about, you know, like the lorry side, they have the there's a marketplace there, shows a shelf, you know, make it like anything you bid, don't make it so tall. So it won't have the environment concerns. Won't have a candle lever, which just adds an extra danger. I'm I'm sorry over that. Won't be residential. We'll close it and you can have a place very good to be developed. So it's not sitting vacant. And you can have a place for, you can have, you know, a little really local communities. You're allowed to call this a little bit. Can't get anything off the ground view. You know, they can have like, you know, like stall, like like these marketplaces where they have like booths and things. So they can spend all their money on rent. They can give it a go. How about something like that? You know what I mean?
We are already having the the market that's going on underneath the.
Right, that that town. So we're not against enough. We're not, you know, and we're definitely not against affordable housing, but it has to be reasonable. You know, this is like ridiculous. I'm sorry.
I know, I gotta take.
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in and say we are doing commercial for school.
But that's that's not the problem.
Yes.
And.
Yeah, I don't I don't know.
Clayton, yeah, go ahead.
It's just that. I mean, I think it is true because we aren't building that important. You look at the numbers, you nine year old plus like. Important. And whenever I, there's lots of them, we get in the board is that we'll build up. It's really hard to build new sites here. And the site necessarily required is present. And I think one of the things, I I don't. I think that you should have worked with development yet. Try and get to the yes. If I would take twelve or twelve or leaves for nothing and I take sixteen units to know myself personally. I think we belong to incubator space, uh, Manhattan Mall Back Center, which is mostly vacant. And if you look at our state of needs, you say, or compare it to me. So I think there's a bunch of really valid issues. I think that you know, it's quite possible to make a back strength on that and say it's important, but I think when I look at what these communities say to me, we always say we need that, we need important. So I'd love to work with them and say, let's go for this, you know, option. Let's try to keep the shapes. But many of it's a great department. That's in my sense.
Did you, did you?
Yeah. I'm gonna be, I so and this is real. I'm I'm giving that. And I, you know, probably wouldn't follow by. I would say that. But. Oh, yeah. I have to run down there to do that. I run through all of that. You know, if you went next next to the one train, all the line.
To get a right, it's the difference between next to the one train and this fully structurally part of this track completely different. I understand that, but you see. I remember when Metro North had a fire. Right? Thank God those buildings weren't far of the track in that area, because it was bad. Google that when they had, I think they had multiple wires. Anyways, sorry. Thank you. Um, what for? You, did you start working on the rezon?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
And sure, the law.
Okay. Uh, uh, okay.
Yeah, just to add to everyone's point, I agree with you a little bit. I think for me to disconnect here is that the developer isn't doing it as a benefit to the community. If they were, we wanted to. I would say that's all true. Um, if you were looking to accommodate in one community, you would be saying, listen, we know it's not a great spot. We know it's not desirable. But we want to add something to lay it in. While also trying to, because I can't imagine that that lifted on those for any other reason other than sort of like illness. So beside that, that's my concern. If it doesn't add enough to the community, it takes a good bit away in terms of. Not just environmental issues, some.
It's not just problems. The eighty. I mean, I'm talking to. It's not a problem.
I can say that. I'm just talking about what you sound horrible. Right, so I'm.
Community Board, first eighteen years, I go back and I would.
I appreciate that. I think that's just the end. Yes. This is a, an operating. I'm not, I'm not. I'm just saying that you have to defend that probably many of the people online here that it takes away a lot without giving nothing. And I think that's the main.
Yeah. I mean, often in our community board, we have been suggesting to people are developers who have projects that are are not affordable enough or um, not not giving back enough that we will actually um, change zoning so that um, developers can do more. Um, because we really do wanna see more. I, yeah, I I mean, I still, I think the concerns about Amtrak being connected and that Amtrak hasn't agreed to this yet. And that you, you have, I mean, you're gonna be spending a hell of a lot of money for, you know, on a you know, you have no idea if Amtrak is gonna say yes, not if Amtrak's gonna say no. I mean, that's just crazy amount of money. Like, and that's the reason why you didn't do the full engineering study. So.
That's sort of separation to base on your recommendation. If the project can be built but not to Amtrak, maybe that's the developer's fault and quality, or they can be. Your concerns are that residential use isn't appropriate here. Your number of forty eight units is inappropriate here. Then.
No, I think it's safety. I think it's safety of the residents. I think it's safety of our transportation system that they have those things connected like that.
Even if, even if Amtrak proves that you're still concerned.
I mean, I think that's what Amtrak is gonna say.
But as I'm saying, you can't put that part of your ticket if Amtrak doesn't approve it. It's not being safe. It's not gonna be reconstructed. But if it can be built safely, then your fault positive should be, okay, is this an appropriate application?
Right, but if if Amtrak rules that it can't be built safely, we'll have already gone ahead and made some plan. And, you know, taking it away from the manufacturing zone land that we're making happen. So so it's not like we're giving up nothing.
If there's never been a manufacturing use, it'll still be a commercial over and bad commercial use, not solely in our vision. It'll be a C two V four. Whatever uses is occupied the site of storage and still will still be permitted. Along as in that the Amtrak approval, this is considered on Amtrak approval. I can think your recommendations should be concerned about whether it's safe or not from the Amtrak's point of view, because if it's not safe, it won't be built. All the indications are that this can be done with the proper engineering. I think the asking before you is, is this application appropriate?
Yeah.
The land is just.
I think. With all due respect, the community board is here to protect our residents.
Yes.
Um, in terms of safety. So whether there are people who live here now or move here in the future, we will embrace them and we will wanna protect them. And if it's not safe, I mean, when I saw that this was coming back, you, my first question was, you know, what did Amtrak said? And I I don't think we should be reviewing this until Amtrak has said that they find it safe. I I mean, it doesn't feel safe to me and I'm, but I'm not an expert. And I would really, I would love to. Uh, would they think if this is safe before we make?
Amtrak is never an issue during the time.
Right, so well, so I mean, but that's gonna inform our our decision here.
I don't have the capacity and I don't.
Please.
Well, I guess one concern is if they, so if we reject then by our time, maybe they can correct. And they'll respond to the theory. And then come back to us and we reject it again. Like, it seems like.
No, they won't come back to us.
Right, and then like, like.
So we can.
But they should. But they should.
They have a long time. I mean, we're talking, the last time this came to us was like twenty eighteen. It's been a long time. And sort of, so when this came back, like, you know, we were all here. We've all been on this community board that long to remember that conversation. And so when I saw it was coming back, I was like, oh, so like Amtrak has said, like, they said no, and they haven't yet. And it has been.
Very long period. By six to. And how do you manage to look at the land use specification? If Amtrak determines that it's unsafe, project will not proceed. Much less is this an appropriate rezoning, especially permanent. That's.
I disagree with this. So you have to understand that, just picture, God forbid, something happens. What you do is look back. Don't go with this. Go allow this. Go try and there could never be that pain or etcetera. We have responsibility to our community members, not just our own person. But it's capable to be a distraction and make a deepness decision based on those things. We we have to. It's it's a part of the community.
Good, but are you professional to analyze?
Exactly, you are the duty. Except for that.
Sure. Yeah. Um, so we've been talking a lot here. Um, in the room. Sorry, I I'm trying to do six million things at once. Um, is there any other discussion from community board members um, who are joining us online? Please raise your hand. Bye. Yes, go ahead, Yuen.
Hi, thank you, Liz. I joined just about fifteen minutes ago, but um, so I've missed half of, I don't know if there was a presentation. And I'm trying to catch up um, from the uh, comments made um, in the last ten minutes. Um, I'm also familiar with the project from the last presentation. And personally, I feel that um, aside from all the safety issues, you know, um, as expressed, um, um, I feel that uh, from a design point of view, from an economic development point of view, from a um, an asset, a valuable asset that this community has, which is the waterfront and the vast um, potential of developing that waterfront so that it it um, it benefits the community as a whole that um, granting or um, uh, approval, community approval of a rezoning that it is for this project, um, that is inappropriate and very, very wrong. And it does the community disservice. What this community need is com- um, economic development. Um, we're not gonna, are we prostituting ourselves for affordable housing in any form and anywhere? You know, I, I mean, this, 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 this project is really um, offensive to me. And I think this is an opportunity for the community board to be creative and work with the developer and says, yes, we need affordable housing, but perhaps this is not the site for affordable housing. What we need is economic development, whether it's um, uh, developing the space so that it's available to community in terms of rentals or citing of um, uh, businesses that would afford um, uh, employment opportunities. Um, and and for our local businesses or for businesses outside of the community. But, you know, my position is that we, you know, the community and the community board and the elected should hold fast to a clear plan for the waterfront and exploiting that that the potential of that waterfront so that it benefits the community rather than benefiting a a developer sees an opportunity to make money and uses, first it used to be, you know, um, community facilities, you know, using all these keywords and buzzwords to 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 drive through a project which is completely inappropriate for this um, community. And, you know, not to mention that the waterfront is now being, the sightlines are now being um, blocked from the rest of the community between Columbia's development. And now we're right on the waterfront. I just think it's wrong, wrong, wrong. I don't wanna be boxed in.
Thanks, Yuen. Thanks, Yuen. Um, so we are gonna wrap um, uh, this public session by um, going around and um, we are going to vote on um, the approval of um, whether we are in support or um, or we do not support um, the, where is it go? The six U L R actions uh, requested today by the applicant. Um, so we are going to uh, let everyone vote, as I said earlier in the meeting. Um. So we are gonna start with um, housing land use and zoning, uh, uh, committee members and uh, public members. So do I have, I have like names and anything?
What's I know, like, numbers or names or what?
Um, I think just numbers, but um.
Is the full board on Thursday number vote or is this?
Uh, so this is a um, uh, we do not have a forum tonight, so this is not an official vote. And then on Thursday, the full community board will vote um, whether to approve the resolution that we. Yeah, so the official vote will be Thursday. And this is somewhat symbolic, is where we don't have forum and we let everybody vote, but um, it will inform the decision on. So Sydney is not here. I will vote first, so um, I vote not to approve um, uh, this application. Uh, Juan Polares, I don't believe is on Zoom. Um, Alana Mercado, how do you vote? Annette Robinson, how do you vote?
Well, say the clammy, a yes, this is a project. And no, in the end.
Correct.
No.
Um, Barry Weinberg, I just add Barry and he votes no. Uh, Anita, is Anita on Zoom? Our public members? Sorry. I have way too many things going on at once. Um, I don't think I saw Anita. Uh, Tanya, Tanya, I did see you. How do you vote?
No.
Thank you, Tanya. Uh, Jared Knowles. Jared, are you here?
I vote no.
Votes no. Alda. Alda votes no. Um, now, uh, community board members. Alda votes no. Um, now, uh, community board members.
What are we voting on?
Uh, not.
Okay.
We're just voting on whether we support the proposed, yeah, I, I, I. I said you told me. Yep. Barry says no. Um, Shanique. Shanique, she left. She left. Anyone else? Clayton?
Yes.
Clayton votes yes. Anyone else from the community board on the Zoom who is?
Which vote is this for? Laquita, which vote is this for?
Uh.
I had to tune out for a second. I had to, I had to turn off for a second.
Uh, this is, uh, a vote of whether you support this project or you do not.
Um. I'll vote, uh, no.
Thank you, Laquita. Heather Jason?
Heather votes no.
Heather votes no. Any. Anyone else? Uh, Tiffany? What's that?
I think it might be some news.
Arden? I, I wouldn't know. Yeah, I don't think they're officially, we haven't gotten their names. Uh, Tiffany, are you on?
Yes, I, I vote no.
Tiffany votes no. Is there anyone else, uh, who is on the community board or a public member? If not, we will go to, um, public voting. Clayton, so, um, just report these separately. Um, so we will go around the room. Sorry, I don't know everyone's names.
Bob.
Hi, Bob, how do you vote? Votes no. No. Strapped it there.
I, I missed here.
Okay. Thank you, all right, you. Um, so I'm just going to call names as I see them in the particip- participant chat. Uh, Euan, how do you vote?
Absolutely not. No.
Thank you. Thank you, Euan. Arthur, huh? Are you online? Arthur? I'll come back to you if you want to mute yourself. Basha, how do you vote? Basha, are you still with us? We will come back to you if you hear this. Uh, Bill, how do you vote? No, Bill.
Oh, no.
Thank you, Bill. Um, now they're all jumping around. Celeste Royo, how do you vote?
I work for the borough president's office, so I'm not voting. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, I might miss you because now my participants list is jumping around. Divine Essence White, how do you vote?
I vote no.
Thank you. Ephraim G, how do you vote?
Uh, no.
Thank you. Gabriel. Letessa Ortiz.
I vote no.
Thank you. Jael Sanchez.
I vote no as well.
Thank you. Uh, Lori Brumenhoff.
I vote no.
Thank you. Uh, Mark Ergang. I know your name. Mark, are you here? Natalie Brusell. How do you vote? Tanya and then, um, Tiffany Brown. Is there anyone who is on the Zoom who did not vote and missed their opportunity? Please speak now. So with that voting, uh, I want to thank everyone for, um, joining us tonight for this public hearing.
Oh, oh, sorry. It's, sorry, it's Mark Ergang. Um, sorry, I wasn't able to get my mic working. I vote no.
Thank you, Mark. We got it. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Um, so, um, thanks everyone for participating in this, um, in this, uh, special meeting. Um, we are going to officially close this hearing and go back to our regular business. I just want to repeat one more time, um, if you do have official feedback. Um, for this project and would like to submit it, you may do, do so through May thirtieth. Um, I do also have, um, up on my screen, uh, a draft resolution. Um, that will be, um, modified and edited. Um, and presented for a Thursday night's, uh, whole community board dying meeting. Um, I am not going to read it, um, right now, but. Uh, it has a essentially various where, uh, comments that were made throughout the evening. Um, and it ends with, uh, two therefore statements. That say therefore be it resolved that community board nine recommends against the six U L actions requested by the applicant. And therefore be it resolved, uh, further resolved that Manhattan Community Board nine urges the applicant to market the building for commercial manufacturing uses. Once the H W M. Uh, 12th Avenue Capital Project to repair the broken sewer interceptor and repair the sinkhole. Uh, is completed. It still needs some more words in there, but, um, we will work on that for Thursday night's meeting. Uh, all right, so with that, we will, uh, conclude our public hearing. Um, thank you gentlemen for joining us tonight and.
I see it Thursday.
See you Thursday and you will, um, bring, hopefully bring environmental. Okay, thank you. Okay. So, thanks everyone. Yeah. Uh, all right, so we are going to go back to our, thank you, thank you for joining us. Um, and if you were here, please sign in on the, uh, sheets before you go so that we know that you were here. Um, um. I hope you all tell Sydney that I did an okay job tonight. Thank you, it's so hard to do by yourself. I, yeah, yeah, I thought my job was hard. Um, okay, so we will go back to our regular agenda. We do still have, um. A presentation from D C P on City of Yes, so that will be, um, up next. Uh, before we do that, um. Uh, I did circulate, uh, meeting minutes, we're taking the circulated meeting minutes, um, to behalf of the board. No. Um, so we cannot approve me, uh, meeting minutes. Okay, so you will move on to our presentation from, uh, D C P. I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm supposed to be going to share my screen. Oh, I am sharing. So I am going to stop sharing my screen. And then, um.
Hi, Liz, um, can you enable screen sharing for me, please?
Yes. I am here. Uh, maybe. Be able to share now.
All right.
Um, so I just, before you get started with this, just for everyone who is here. Uh, this is a preliminary presentation from D C P. Uh, I believe we will be coming back to the whole community board meeting, uh, to present. And then we will, um, we will not write a resolution and approve it this month. Um, we will do that in June. Um, so the only resolution that we will be putting on in May. Seven oh one West one thirty five, and City of Yes will be in June. Take away, Audrey.
Sure, um, it's just going to take me a second to share my screen. Sorry about that. All right, um. Um, Jose or Damon, actually, could I trouble you to, to share your screen? I think with a single monitor, it's not going to let me share in, um, presenter mode, uh, without showing the sidebar.
Yeah, I should be able to do that.
Thank you.
Hmm, did you only have the PowerPoint or, or sorry, the PDF or also the PowerPoint?
Um, I also, I shared the PowerPoint in our chat. Let me know if.
Audrey, I, I have the one that you said pink.
Okay, I made, um, a couple of updates to it. Okay. Yeah, sorry about that all.
Are you just trying to pull it up?
Yeah, hopefully I'm able to share my screen. I'm not sure if you have to give them separate permissions, but it looks like I'm able to share that now. Thanks.
Amazing. Thank you so much.
Of course.
All right, um, so let us get started. Um, good evening, everyone. I'm looking forward to discussing City of Yes for Housing Opportunity with you all tonight. Uh, my name is Audrey Walks. I'm a Borough Planner for, uh, Community District Nine. Tonight I'm joined by Jose Trucius as the Upper Manhattan Planning Team Leader. And Damon McCullough, uh, Senior Data Engineer and Housing Opportunity Specialist. And, um, before I dive in, please remind me how much time, uh, we have for this. I will. Keep within that time.
Um, usually for presentations, um, Audrey, there isn't a time limit.
Um, okay.
And this is much shorter, so I think you should be fine. I mean, I would try to keep it to ten minutes if possible.
Oh, ten minutes, okay. Um, I will do my absolute best, um, might be closer to fifteen if that's okay.
Yep, sound good.
All right, great. Um, so City of Yes for Housing Opportunity is a citywide text amendment that would change zoning to allow for equitable housing development. These changes would enable a little more housing in every neighborhood by removing barriers to housing growth. Which would make a big impact on the housing shortage without dramatic change in any one neighborhood. There will be a question break, uh, before we discuss some of the citywide proposals, so. There's a lot of information and, uh, I kindly ask you to hold questions for that period or until the end of the presentation. So. Oh, sorry, uh, slide three, please. Great, um, so New York City, as we all know, faces a severe housing shortage. The vacancy rate for rental apartments is at one point four percent, which is far below a healthy vacancy rate that would provide New Yorkers with housing options. Because our housing demand is greater than our housing supply, uh, New Yorkers are experiencing very high housing costs. Uh, over half of New York City renters are rent burdened, meaning they spend over thirty percent of their monthly income on rent. Not having enough homes is also the direct cause of homelessness. As of last year, almost ninety-three thousand New Yorkers, including thirty-three thousand children, slept in a shelter. Next slide. So how did we get here? Um, most of New York City's housing was created in the first half of the twentieth century. And since that time, housing production has fallen dramatically. That is in part because zoning has become increasingly restrictive since nineteen sixty-one. And at the same time, housing production has decreased, the demand for housing has increased. Next slide. What recent housing production has occurred has been limited to only a few neighborhoods. In twenty twenty-three, ten community districts produce as much housing as the other forty-nine districts combined. When some neighborhoods stop producing housing, that puts additional pressure on other neighborhoods to produce more and more new housing. Next slide. The proposals in City of Yes for Housing Opportunity emerged from the goals outlined in Where We Live, uh, New York's, uh, Cities for our Housing Plan. And, uh, when tenants have few options for housing, landlords gain a lot of leverage. And this leads to high rents, displacement and gentrification pressure, segregation, homelessness, poor housing quality, and tenant harassment. Next slide. Zoning is but one tool to address New York's housing, housing shortage. Um, basically, uh, as, as I'm sure many of the, uh, folks here tonight know, zoning regulates the density and use of what is permitted to be built. Um, it can include requirements for income-restricted affordable housing, um, but zoning doesn't directly build or fund new housing. Um, and, but it is one tool that is within the city's control. Next slide. Changing our zoning can respond to these housing issues by increasing the number and types of homes, uh, available in every neighborhood across the city. And if every neighborhood adds a little more housing, New York City can add a lot more housing overall. Without any single neighborhood experiencing dramatic changes or overwhelmed infrastructure. Next slide. Tonight, uh, we'll first discuss, uh, our low-density proposals, uh, which will allow for what's called missing middle housing. Which includes town center zoning and transit-oriented development. Um, and accessory dwelling units, which we'll get into in a minute. Then we'll move on to the universal affordability preference as part of our high-density proposals, medium and high-density. Um, which would allow bigger buildings, uh, for affordable housing, uh, in these medium and high-density neighborhoods. And finally, uh, we'll discuss some citywide actions, including, uh, parking, conversions. Uh, small and shared apartments, infill development, uh, landmark, uh, transfer of development rights and more. Next slide. So first, um. So Community District Nine is a, uh, there is no low-density districts in nine. But I want to review the low-density proposals because I think this is a citywide. And so it's important to see what our, uh, neighbors and our, in the outer boroughs, uh, would be doing to address the housing shortage. So. Due to restrictive zoning, many of these low-density areas have stopped building new homes, which is a major contributor to the housing shortage. So, uh, as I mentioned before, we want to just create a little more housing in, uh, in every neighborhood and in low-density areas. And in medium and high, we're hoping to do that in a way, uh, that wouldn't impact the neighborhood's look and feel. Next slide. Our town center proposal aims to create more missing middle housing, uh, in low-density areas. Missing middle housing refers to a category of housing that's modest in scale and often affordable to middle-income residents. This was a once-common type of housing that's not often built in the city anymore. So this proposal aims to re-legalize mixed-use apartments or buildings with a ground floor commercial use and a few stories of housing on top. Um, this proposal would streamline these rules, including restrictive limits on floor area and height. So that it is once again feasible to build these two to four-story of housing above commercial ground floors. so that it is once again feasible to build these two-to-four-story of housing above commercial ground floors. Next slide. Second proposal for missing middle housing is transit-oriented development. Transit-oriented development would allow for low-rise building on sites that are near transit and meet specific criteria. The site has, would have to be near transit, over 5,000 square feet, and on the short end of a block or facing a street over 75 feet wide. And these buildings, we would be three to five stories in height. Next slide. In the rest of the low-density area, the proposal aims to give homeowners more flexibility. Under this proposal, a wanted-to-family home would be allowed to add a small accessory dwelling unit or ADU. ADUs provide important housing options for these small, for for small households. They give multi-generational families more space and help owner, homeowners pay for household expenses. And it's worth noting that many other cities have already legalized ADUs and experience these benefits. Next slide. The same rule change that enable, that would enable ADUs could also help homeowners who want to add an ADU but need more flexibility to adapt or renovate their homes to meet their needs. So our proposal would adjust floor area ratio, perimeter heights, yards, and other rules to provide flexibility for homeowners. Many of these older homes are out of compliance, which blocks homeowners from adapting their homes to meet these, to meet their families, to meet their families' needs. And so these changes would enable two-family and multifamily buildings, like the ones pictured at left in Queens. They would enable them in districts that already permit them. Because today, a home like this could not be built, you know, where, could not be built in in this type of low-density district. Next slide. Great, we're now going to turn our attention to the medium and high-density areas of New York. There's a lot of information in these next 11 slides, so after I presented this, we'll pause for questions. The proposal introduces universal affordability preference, or UAP. It would allow apartment buildings to be at least 20% larger, so long as all the extra space is occupied by permanently affordable or supportive housing. UAP is modeled after current rules that allow bigger buildings for affordable senior housing in some neighborhoods. UAP would allow incremental housing growth in neighborhoods and encourage affordable housing throughout the city, rather than concentrating it in a few neighborhoods. Next slide. Today, most zoning districts allow affordable senior housing to be about 20% more dense than other buildings. So UAP would expand this framework to all forms of affordable and supportive housing, making it easier to build affordable housing in every medium and high-density district. This proposal would also create a 20% bump for affordable and supportive housing in districts that don't have a senior housing preference today. Some districts will also receive height increases so that it's feasible for UAP buildings to fit in their allowed square footage. So there would be a proposed, many of, much of Community District Nine is already covered by that, by that senior housing preference. And the dark orange shows where it it could be, could be applied to to a larger and additional area. Next slide. So what does affordability mean for UAP? UAP would have an affordability requirement of 60% of area median income. An average of, an average AMI of 60% means that roughly half of the units created will be at 60% AMI or below. At 60% AMI, which is about $76,000 income for a family of three, UAP would serve lower-income New Yorkers, would serve lower-income New Yorkers better and more comprehensively than the existing zoning tool, voluntary inclusionary housing. UAP would replace voluntary inclusionary housing, but mandatory inclusionary housing, which requires a percentage of new developments to be income-restricted, affordable housing would continue to exist and be mapped where there are significant increases in residential density. There is, VIH is mapped today in in nine, but MIH is not. Next slide. So this is a rendering of how UAP would play out. Without UAP, the building is built according to the base FAR for market rate housing. The result is this eight-story apartment building. And with UAP, the building can be about 20% bigger, which, for this example, translates to an additional two stories, so long as that extra space is permanently affordable housing. And I just want to note that the housing, the affordable housing would not be segregated. There would not be a corridor. It would not be put just in that, you know, that that additional UAP bump, it would be distributed throughout the building like affordable housing is built today. So, next slide. And here's a quick example of how UAP could be used. A developer has a vacant site in an R72 district and wants to build a mixed-income building. Today, the site is limited to a 3.44 FAR, which results in about 50 units, regardless of how many units in the building are affordable. So the proposal would introduce a five FAR for affordable and supportive housing, which would yield 20 to 22 more affordable homes, only if anything above that 3.44 FAR is permanently affordable. The building would be about two-to-four stories bigger to accommodate that extra housing for you keep. And this would yield a total of 50 market rate units and 20 permanently affordable units for a total of 70 housing units. Next slide. And here's what UAP would look like in new construction, 100% affordable housing. Let's say the city has a site in an R8 district and that is going to be used for affordable housing. Today, the site is limited to four FAR, which results in about 47 units. R8 districts right now do not have a, sorry, REB districts right now do not have a senior housing preference. So UAP would give a 4.8 bump for affordable and supportive housing, which is about 20%. And the site could get nine to 10 more permanently affordable homes. To accommodate this, the building would also be allowed to be two to three stories taller than it would be today. Next slide. And here's a quick table of the UAP FAR bumps for those medium and high-density districts, like in CD9. We can return to this table for discussion, but for the sake of time, right now, I'm going to move on to the next slide. Great, um, and so, as I mentioned earlier, voluntary inclusionary housing is, is up, is an optional affordable housing tool today. It's mapped twice in District Nine on 145th between Broadway and Amsterdam and on 125th and Convent Avenue. And so UAP would replace VIH. Next slide. This proposal would also introduce some improvements to MIH. First, MIH Option 3, previously known as the Deep Affordability Option, could be applied as a standalone option. MIH Option 3 requires a 20% set aside at an average of 40% AMI. The MIH FARs would be equalized for districts where the UAP FAR is higher. So, for example, in R6A, R6A, MIH would change from a 3.6 to a 3.9 FAR. And the MIH options would stay, that stay the same. The proposal would also streamline rules for 100% affordable projects, which would include the facilitation of affordable homeownership. Just to wrap, next slide. Just to wrap the, the medium and high-density proposals, this is an example of a mixed-income building in an MIH area. If a developer wanted to build in an R7A district, the, that was recently rezoned and subject to MIH, the site would be limited to a 4.6 FAR, which would yield about 54 units, 20, a quarter of which would be required to be affordable. And so the proposal would increase the overall FAR to five and keep the MIH requirements in place, which would yield 59 units, which is a modest bump over the, over the 54 without the UAP. Next slide. So I'm at 16 minutes. I would like to pause here for questions. Does that, does that work with your timing, Liz and and the committee?
More slides? You don't have any more slides, do you?
Let's see. I do not. I have, yeah, I can go through the next slides quickly if if that works.
Yeah, I think you should just keep going.
Great, all right, so now we're going to move on to talking about some of the citywide proposals. The first is, the first proposal, the first citywide proposal would make parking optional for new housing everywhere, which follows the example of many other major cities. Why are we proposing this? Manded parking is extremely expensive to provide, and these costly mandates drive up rents and prevent new housing from being built. This is an obstacle to housing growth, especially affordable housing. Parking will still be allowed, and projects can add whatever parking is appropriate at their location, but they will not be required to provide parking. Next slide. City of Yes for Housing Opportunity would make it easier for underused, non-resident, non-residential buildings, such as offices, to be converted to housing. To do this, the proposal would make a few changes to adaptive reuse regulations. First, it would expand these regulations citywide to go beyond office districts. Like, you see, there's a very sharp dividing line where the current eligible geography for conversions is below Central Park and Northern Manhattan would be in the proposed eligible geography. So it would move the eligibility date up for conversions from 1961 or '77 to 1991, to allow more recent buildings to convert. It'd also allow the conversion to all types of housing, including supportive housing, shared housing, and dorms. Next slide. We would also, so today, there's a zoning rule known as the Dwelling Unit Factor, which prevents buildings from including small units. This proposal would remove the Dwelling Unit Factor in central locations and reduce it elsewhere, allowing for buildings with more studio and one-bedroom apartments. It will re-legalize buildings with only studios and one bedrooms, which would provide an important entry point to the New York City housing market. Next slide. The proposal would also develop clear rules for building shared housing, or homes with private bedrooms but shared kitchens and other common facilities. Currently, zoning does not have a clear path for building shared housing. So creating clear definitions and rules would make it possible to build shared housing in any multifamily zoning district, enable a range of new shared housing projects, including affordable shared housing, and help legalize existing unregulated shared housing. Next slide. This would be a typology that we would actually return to from the past. This is a picture of the Barbizon. It was built in 1928, Sun 63rd and Lex, and it's a mix of around 650 small and shared units. Looks like any other buildings, quite a handsome building, but could not be built today because of the ban on rooming units and limits on small apartments. Next slide. The proposal would also make it easier to add contextual infill to campuses and other irregular or challenged sites. The, it would streamline complex rules so campuses can use existing development rights to add height-limited buildings. Other changes included in that proposal are as follows. We would propose expanding the applicability of flexible contextual envelopes, eliminate the outdated sliver law in favor of height-limited contextual height limits, and update waterfront rules to allow for housing, particularly affordable housing. Next slide. New York City has a diverse array of special districts that have been enacted to further neighborhood planning goals. As a general approach, the current proposal carries through any relevant changes to the, to the special district, like the special Manhattanville Mixed Use District or the special 125th Street District, in order to ensure these areas also have appropriate housing opportunities. And in order to be respectful to these special districts, rules will be modified where the changes directly conflict with the special district's goals. Your June meeting, if it works for your timeline and for the committee, I would like to return to this to discuss how these changes would, would potentially impact the special districts in Community District Nine, but for the sake of time, I'm going to move on to the next slide. So, the proposal would also expand the Landmark TDR program. The program was created in the 1960s to relieve the financial burden on designated landmarks, which are subject to maintenance requirements and limited in their ability to redevelop or add new buildings to the lot. The proposal would also allow landmarks to transfer development rights to more sites, including other zoning lots on the same zoning block as the landmark or immediately across the street or at an intersection from the block. The proposal would also streamline the approval process to certification where no bulk modifications are necessary to accommodate the TDRs on the receiving site or as an authorization when an applicant is seeking a bulk modification. These expansions of the Landmark TDR program would help generate revenue to maintain landmarks or also unlocking additional housing opportunities. Next slide. Just to wrap up, the changes we walked through today are the most significant proposals in City of Yes for Housing Opportunity. Overall, this tax amendment aims to create a little more housing everywhere, so each neighborhood does its part to address our city's housing, housing needs. And so a few neighborhoods don't feel the intense pressure on housing that they do today. And it's not just about making, building more housing. It's about allowing more types of housing, multifamily housing, where it's currently not allowed, homes of different sizes to meet different people's needs, and crucially, far more affordable and supportive housing. Next slide. Here's our timeline. Referral was on April 29th, and the formal community board review started on May 8th. There is a 60-day community board review at minimum. And the, and then we'll close the timeline. The City Planning Commission will vote, will close the timeline with a city council vote at the end of this year. So thank you for your time and attention tonight, and I'm happy to take any questions I have.
Thanks, Audrey. So like I said, we will not officially vote on this, this month. DCP will join us for in June and then also at a full community board meeting where we will. Audrey, are you coming on Thursday to do a presentation for us?
I, this is, this is the first I'm, I'm hearing of this. But let me, let, let's, let's chat offline about it, maybe.
All right, yeah, I thought I saw that that was in one of the samples.
Yeah, let's, let's chat. Sorry, I just came back from, from a trip today, and so I'm, I'm catching up, so, yeah.
Yeah, all right, I will go back and double check. So, let's start with housing lands, use, and zoning questions or community board. Yeah, so there was some slide that mentioned building more studios and one bedroom units, I think. And I'm sorry, I don't, it's been a long night. I don't remember if it was like affordable, but I just have a question. So I think that's great. My only question is, some communities, there is more of an need for like, you know, two, three bedroom for families, like, you know, would, would there be some sort of community consultation in terms of, you know, would, would there be some sort of community consultation uh in terms of, you know, um, where, where, what would we build there? Sorry, and again, I, I probably didn't read the whole thing, or it's, because it's been a long night, so, um, so yeah, so that's my question.
Sorry, well.
Audrey, I think the concern for community board nine is that we have a lot of families here. And um, so while we understand that this will create more units, um, is there, to me, I mean, this is going to disencourage uh family, family units?
Yeah, I think that's, that's a really great uh great flag. Uh, the way, no one will be forced um to build a studio one-bedroom apartment, and we uh were intending that this actually frees up those, you know, two, three, four, or five-bedroom apartments that are currently occupied by unrelated roommates, and that would be better occupied um by families. And so I absolutely hear, you know, the need for um family-sized units, and we're hoping that this provides a relief, and will, of course, you know, whether a developer decides to, you know, pursue a studio or or one-bedroom exclusive um construction will depend on on market factors as well. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, I just, I wonder if in the, in the um tax amendment, something could be included, like, you know, if there is this bump, this twenty, twenty-five percent bump that um that a certain percentage of that that percentage is set aside for family needs. Is that what, uh, yeah? I mean, so that they don't get lost, um, because obviously a developer can make more money on more units than on a one, you know, less, larger. I mean, I, I do, I do think there is a, you know, like a need for, you know, studio and one-bedroom, I mean, we want more housing period, right? We wanna have like, you know, maybe a little bit smaller people or, you know, couple or whatever, but yeah, yes, my concern is, you know, that, you know, more housing for families can be lost in the phrase of, like, is there a way to incentivize?
Yeah. That's um, that's a great point. I made, I made a note of that, and I, I also just wanted to clarify. Um, the U A, the U A P, the universal affordability preference, um, is uh, is, is related but separate from, from the elimination of the dwelling unit factor. So, um, the studio and one-bedroom buildings, um, you know, can be built market rate, and I have to check whether those could be subject to um the uh U A P provisions as well. I think so, but let me, let me double check on that.
Yeah, so regarding the U A P, I think I'm excited that sixty percent of people four-wheeling, like something like eighty percent, and I expect seventy-nine percent. Um, but still, we're not even talking about we want something more aligned forty percent. Um, I think it's good that we have an opportunity, you know, so we could do like ten percent, forty percent, ten, sixty percent, something like that. Is there a way for community boards to give input for that preference? Or, you know, to like have like recommended bands that, you know, are contextual neighborhoods that, uh, by having that's a good thing.
Yeah, I, that is something we have heard from nearly every community, and the way that we uh are, are intending to address that is that um the U A P has that affordability requirement of sixty percent AMI, as Damon just pulled up the slide, but it will allow for income averaging, so um in order to reach that sixty percent, you'll get a certain percentage of apartments at thirty percent, others at ninety pers, others at ninety percent, and to reach that sixty. So within that range, um, which provides a wider range of um affordability.
I see, yeah, like I, I, I appreciate you ready to. I, I guess the question is maybe this will be a question. Is there, this is a specific break we want to do.
Sorry, it's a little, it's a little hard to hear you. Could you, um, would you be able to say that again and maybe type the question in the chat?
Yeah, sorry, this better?
This is better.
Okay, the, the, the question was like, I understand that the income averaging worked, and I think, I think that's straight. Um, I guess the, the question is whether there's a way for us to specify which bars we're looking for as a community, you know, so that we can recommend that the people building here, that they have as much forty percent as possible, so.
Got it. Um, Damon, Jose, any, any comments on that?
Well, I mean, I, I can uh take a stab at that, you know, I think um this will be projects, so the U A P will be projects that will go as alright essentially. Uh, for the market rate developments, you know, developers will be able to take advantage of that additional floor area in lieu of providing affordability, they will enter into an agreement with H P D. Um, one point, as, as Audrey mentioned, you know, the sixty percent A M I is, you know, we're very proud of achieving a sixty percent because it's a lot, um, you know, it's more than they require M I H right now, eighty percent, and also allows to do the average income as opposed to the voluntary inclusionary housing. That being said, I think, you know, right now, we do have, you know, during the public review to make comments and suggestions on this. Um, from community boards, we're hearing that, you know, even when we were doing the heirs' house and the senior housing, right, we also is a sixty percent, but we realize that sometimes that is not enough, and H P D will modify the turn sheets and enter in different agreements to provide um additional affordability. Um, that is something that, you know, we can definitely point out in the comments, and when, once this comes back to uh the public hearing, you know, make sure that those uh concerns are raised, you know, as of, I believe, last month of now, um, the area median income was raised again. That is a concern that we also heard in other boards, that this essentially raises every other year or every year, and that sixty percent becomes even more unattainable. Uh, but at D C P, I think, you know, getting that sixty percent for us was a um, a win for us in terms of negotiation with the state and the city. Um, I, for what I know, I believe the maximum that you can kind of like um provide when it, when it comes to uh the affordability is between forty percent and eighty percent, that's the range. Um, and the, for, for developments to be able to be feasible, I believe the city um O H P D more, more, um, more in line was, you know, able to provide a turn sheets at a sixty percent mark.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, anyone else in the room, and if you have anything? Uh, do we have questions online? Please raise your hand. Uh, um, questions should be limited to uh two minutes. Uh, Tiffany Khan, hey, Jeff, go ahead.
Okay, so in theory, I like uh what you're saying. Uh, absolutely, we need to have low-density areas. Um, do a bit more of a fair share, um, but the devil is in the details as always, and I, there are many details that I have a lot of concerns about. So, for example, you talked about the conversion of office spaces to residential, brilliant idea. Um, but as you were giving examples, and you mentioned, for example, having residential and even the different types like supportive housing, you also kind of mentioned um dorms. And I feel like unless these are dorms that are going to be for, say, city uni students or low-income New Yorkers who are attending some of the private, private institutions, I would be very fiercely opposed to that. Um, the other thing you mentioned, and you, you talk about this being permanently affordable, but what sort of assurance do we have that this is permanently affordable? So, for example, currently, the only truly affordable rentals we have are rent-regulated apartments, and they meet very specific criteria, the building must be pre-war, uh, built before nineteen seventy-four, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And it's D H C R, not the city, it's the state agency that regulates that. So how do you designate this that's going to be affordable, not just today, but throughout the lifetime of this building? Um, and also, who's going to own this, right? Because I'm just really frustrated seeing these large corporate transnational entities, many of whom do not, the owners of which do not live here, do not have any sort of allegiance to New York, being a wonderful city, you know, maintaining the city as it is. Um, and so I would like to see more, if there are going to be landlords that are going to be profiting from this, I would like to see that being New Yorker landlords, not some transnational corporation. Um, and the other concern, lastly, is that we already have a very large stockpile of housing, but a lot of it's being warehoused. So how do we ensure that this is not going to happen? We're not gonna have more of the same. That's it. Oh, and sorry, one last thing. Sorry, one last thing. I invited Staten Island. Staten Island has one train. How is this going to be accessible? And some of the other areas that you highlighted in Brooklyn, the last stop, like, in Flatlands is the two and the five train, that's Flatbush Avenue. Because all of the other swaths of land, it's impossible to get to unless you have a car.
Yeah, thanks, Tim. Yeah, that was one of my thoughts about this whole thing, Audrey. Um, sorry, if you wanna comment on what Tiffany said, I'll, I'll, I'll hold my.
Yeah, can I, um, I'll, I'll, um, yeah, let me start, um, Tiffany, with, with your uh observation about um the regulation of rent-stabilized apartments. Um, many, I, maybe you, maybe friends are, you know, constantly fighting with their landlords over their rent-stabilized apartments, and so, you know, I, I can relate to that on like a personal and a professional level. Um, the, um, it's, so there are two uh, two different threads here. One is, um, D H C R is a state agency uh that is in charge of uh regulating um and overseeing rent-stabilized apartments, and so they do that for the five counties of New York City, um, as well as uh other counties in, in New York. So that's a state agency. These would be rent-regulated through H P D. Um, and that would be, you know, on, at the city level. And so far, I, let me dig and see if I can find more information, more specific information for you on this so far, but um there is really minimal issues with compliance for H P D uh administered rent-regulated buildings. Um, and it's definitely, it's not the same animal as the, um, you know, as the state-regulated units. So let me put a pin in that and get more information to you if, if that's helpful. Um, and as for the other questions um about transit-oriented development, um, we recognize that there is a hu, you know, there's huge transit deserts, um, especially in the outer boroughs. And, um, you know, we are constantly working in partnership with our state and local agencies to improve transit accessibility. Um, this is, uh, you know, we're, we're focusing this near train stations because this types, this type of housing already exists, um, but is not allowed to be built today in many cases due to this, um, you know, post nineteen sixty-one restrictive zoning. So I, you know, it, it would be amazing if we could extend this to every place, you know, especially the uh transit desert places in our city, but right now it's focused around uh, around train stations and bus hubs. Jose or Damon, is there, is there anything you wanna add to that?
Yeah, just to, just wanted to double down on the success of H P D's management of these types of units. Um, the, yeah, the actual execution of it is that as long as the building exists, H P D will uh enforce the percentage of affordable units. That's why we very confidently call them uh permanent affordable units, because it's a quality of the structure. And so I'm, I'm glad um you focus, Audrey, on the difference between the state management and the H P D management of it. And that, in, in this case, with U A P, we were talking about H P D management.
And, and also, you know, on that, on that point, it will be loop also within the mandatory inclusionary housing, you know, type of management. So, um, one of the, the, the caveat of this project is also the U A P and M I H will be managed under the same umbrella, which will make, you know, this uh oversight a lot more um effective in, in our opinion. I think, you know, that's also another win. Um, we have, I, I believe there's a lot of, um, that, that, Audrey, I, you probably know the name better than me, but I think it's the Housing Coalition Group. Um, that was, that, that uh signed a petition for City of Yes, uh, can't remember the name of the organization, but in there, there are a lot of developers, from New York developers, that work directly with H P D. And I, I recognize a bunch of names, um, um, sending especially more on the East Harlem side, Central Harlem developers in there that, you know, are able to, you know, provide their own view, and while, how will this will benefit um that community, especially in there, and so there, um, what do they want to do?
Yes, specifically, and to, yes, great point, Jose, and specifically to add affordable housing developers who work, you know, who have longstanding ties to not only, you know, West Harlem and, and Upper Manhattan, but to other, you know, neighborhoods in the city as well. So let me make a note to find that information, because I, I found it helpful.
Um, so, um, thank you, everyone. I don't see any more questions. I have a few of my own. I just want to point out that it's nine oh eight. Um,
I have a question. Uh, yeah, I'm Orly Ashkram, the wife of Mark Ergang. I am a practicing architect. I, I see this, I see this as a minor building boom, because I've had so many clients and projects that couldn't be done because of parking, because of density or anything else, but I will say that anything you do, you've gotta do the zoning and the approvals as of right. Once, once you file a job and it has to go to H P D, that's a six-month uh extension in the approval process. And at that point in time, for large projects, it doesn't matter, but if you have a five-story walk-up and they wanna put up um a, a penthouse for additional units, um, the, the, the six months uh, you know, delay um, doesn't make a lot of sense, and then you have to have extra expeditors trying to get those approvals. Um, you know, if you're gonna do the codes and, and, and write it up, you've gotta make it uh as of right so they can get building right away. Um, i- i- if I have to wait a year for my clients to get an approval and start the building process, everything changes. Um, you know, the contractor's not there anymore, uh, interest rates change. Um, these things aren't gonna be cheap. You've got, you know, energy codes to deal with as you do all these additions and, and changes and revisions. Um, as I said, this will be a building boom. All right.
Hey, thank you, thank you for bringing that. Um, you know, I, I really appreciate that point, because that's something that we discuss uh in C B, um, Community Board eleven, and also, uh, uh, we're probably gonna encounter that conversation also in ten next week on Thursday, uh, which is, you know, there is a lot of things that we, we're talking about, about the, the proposal to incentivize housing. We are also making a lot of revisions to the zoning text. I, you know, just to show you guys, I have printed out the, the zoning text in here and, and going through it as, and, you know, working on other projects. It's about seventeen hundred pages. There are a lot of things that we, we are being, you know, simplified, moved around, and, and, you know, getting into those things that, um, that are being pointed out in terms of how to make this more usable and digestible. I think, you know, um, we have a discussion coming up with George James, who, who has been advocating for a lot of this preservation of the zoning and, and the gatekeeping uh for development. I think, you know, sometimes we had that debate between uh making it way too easier, or way too, uh, or selling out essentially for developers that, that will potentially, you know, um, do essentially whatever they want in, in this, in these areas. You know, in this, we're talking about a specific, very minimal incremental uh development. You know, the E I S estimates about like one unit per a half an acre, I believe, I believe it is. You know, it's, the estimate is between uh fifty thousand to a hundred thousand units of housing between the fifteen years. Um, so we're talking about that, that minimal increment, I think, is, is going everywhere, it's going, um, uh, you know, the low-density areas, removing those perimeters and things that are very, right now, um, preventing people from developing, you know, uh, multifamily housing in, in those areas in our, in our twos, which is like, yes, getting an additional A D U will essentially trigger a, an additional permit for them to, you know, not being able to qualify for an R two anymore, Getting an additional ADU will essentially trigger a, an additional permit for them to, you know, not being able to qualify for an R two anymore. Because that qualifies under the um. Dwelling unit factor, so that we're trying to deal right now with the state. So there are a lot of things that are going in here that are going to be uh. Very important. And if you have particular questions about those, I mean, if you're pointing out specific things that we have heard in terms of what can prevent development. Please let us know, you know, we're compiling these questions and, and we hope to come back on June to answer specific uh, uh, you know.
Okay, then I have something else. The CONH program, um, uh, get a pilot program, just can't somebody get rid of it? I, I, I have a job that, that we're just trying to get rid of a, a bo- an oil boiler that costs thirty thousand a year to, to renovate. Uh, to, to get rid of and, and it's taking me a year to get the um, the CONH uh, approval process. So it's, it's not making any sense. That's all.
I pointed out, thank you.
Good, okay, bye bye.
All right, so um, I, we need to keep moving on. I just want to point out, Audrey. I do have it in Jose's notes um, that he will be um, with us on Thursday night at the full community board meeting. And I, I'll have to uh, confirm that with, with Youtha and Victor. Um, but it is in Jose's email that he will be with us. I, I don't know to what extent.
Yeah, I really. All you are coming meetings, um, you know, and I say, please let us know if you uh, need us to be. In any of those. And I highlighted that once in June specifically, I just, you know. Uh, put, put out all the ones that we can, that are listed in your calendar.
It, it outlines the presentations that you're giving and when you're going to be with us and, and five sixteen is on there. So I will uh, I'll confirm that after this. Um, so I just want to point out, uh, one of my questions about UAP was, was it uh, capable to contextual zoning? And um, the answer is yes. And I think that's important to note. Uh, because when Harlem was re-governing, and a large portion of it was uh, rezoned uh, to be contextual. So um, this twenty percent bump will raise the FAR on um, essentially everything. Yeah. Um, I, I also just uh, some things, uh, Audrey, other day. Um, that were mentioned that I think um, are uh, concerns of our community board. The conversion of offices um, to affordable housing, we are for. Um, but converting uh, to dorms. And more supportive housing, we have. Um, beyond our fair share of supportive housing in CD nine. Um, we have buildings that continue to be converted from uh. Affordable housing, regular housing to Columbia dorms. Um, so um, I would uh, just, that is something that we should discuss next month. Um, of both of those two issues. Um, waterfront housing, we just, you just saw a presentation on waterfront housing. Um, and I think uh, I think we need to get our brains wrapped around what that might mean. On in our business. Um, and then the uh, development, I think it's slide thirty-four. Of um, I think the combination between contextual infill of strengths. And the transfer of development rights. If you could take a look at. St. Luke's Church on the corner of one forty-one and Convent Avenue. Uh, it is both a landmark district and it has an empty. Portion of, of the lot. Um, of what? How this would impact that particular lot, I think would be helpful for us. Uh, because I know that they're struggling to find someone. Um, to buy the, the site. It has to do with zoning, it has to do with landmarks. And um, I think we all want to see a positive outcome there, but. Uh, you don't want to see a tower in the middle of a landmark district.
Heard. Yeah, that's a great flag. And also, let me look into St. Luke's. That sounds eminently doable.
Okay, thank you. That would be, I think. That was the first thing that came to mind about church campuses. Um, all right, so you're going to be back with us, I think, um, unless anyone has. A super important question, um, we'll move on. I will say, I know that people were asking about slides. Um, I think I, I have some slides that had a previous uh, presentation, but. Um, Audrey or Jose, if you could share that with us so that we can share it with um. Uh, the community um, in preparation for uh, the remainder of the meetings, that would be very.
Sure thing. Um, I'll share the deck that I presented tonight and uh, yeah. Um, feel free to, to share it with whomever would like a copy.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks so much. Talk to you.
Um, so we will go back to our agenda. I know um, Cameron has been uh, waiting very patiently. Um, to give us an update on land trusts.
For sure. Um, and yeah, so folks, I, I think I presented the last month. And folks have a lot of really great questions that I wanted to confirm with uh, the. The New York City Community Land Initiative. So I don't have a slide that, you know, so I know it's late. So I'm going to be pretty quick, but I just wanted to, to run through a few of the, the questions that folks have last visited. Address them and then if those prompt additional questions, then I can, I can see what I can do about those additional questions. Um, so one of the first things that came up was, you know, a question about whether or any provision to this. In reference to the community opportunity to purchase slash public land for public good acts. To prevent sort of opportunistic nonprofits, large land-owning nonprofits from using sort of the, that priority. In that um, COPA so slash public land for public good to purchase land against the interest of the community. Um, and so I can just sort of read verbatim some of the, the, the regulations that are going to, that we're posting through COPA. Uh, so. In COPA, the entity that's qualified for that right of first offer is written as a qualified entity. Means any entity that meets the criteria set forth in section twenty-six eighty-two. Any nonprofit entity in the department's qualified participation buyer list or similar department list. Or any organization that has received funding to operate or implement a community land trust program. So essentially what this means is like, you know, for example, you know, Columbia or any others of large nonprofit. Um, would have to apply to be on the, the qualified list and become a CLT. And they have to adhere to the definition of a CLT, which we'll get into in the next question. Um, and so we're also advocating, you know, that insert the rules, make the process specific, community, and to be able to. To have the right to review or give feedback on that list to, to sort of weed out or vet nonprofits that are, that might be acting. You know, against the interest of the community. So it's not just sort of any nonprofit that exists. It would, you know, need to be a list of eligible vetted nonprofits. I mean, be on a list that would be maintained by HPD and they could be removed from that list. They could bounce or act against the interest of the community and operate in any of these, you know, community relationships. Um, so for the second question, there was, you know, a question around, you know, CLT sound great in theory. Uh, but are there any protections either legally or the CLT model itself to prevent bad actors from just sort of forming a community land trust? And using them to acquire land. So it's sort of, you know, goes to the second part of that question. It's like, all right, what if one of these organizations decided that they wanted to form a CLT management? Uh, but it's actually one of the things that we're working on is, you know, developing a strong CLT definition in administrative code. Hopefully be able to span some of these bad actors or, or just incentivize them um, from.
No, we just haven't been able to see anything through the owl and that's why the square is black and.
Can everybody hear me still? Just thumbs up if you can hear.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm pretty sure they can. The system's not working. I'm sure they can still hear you. I just can't see you.
All right, so, yeah, so. I guess the. Where we might have left off is, yeah, so any protections either legally or in the CLT model itself. To prevent the actors from forming community land trusts, uh, using them to acquire land with advantage. Uh, though there's not currently, you know, sort of policy or legislation in New York City to sort of define CLTs. But that's one of the things that we're working on is trying to create um, sort of a, an administrative definition for a community land trust. Uh, so that's something that we actually definitely appreciate, you know, your support on like what would be important to include in that definition. So that we're reading out some of those back. Um, third question was, you know, talking about sort of HDFCs. Uh, so, you know, any protections to prevent HDFC owners for tax liings from being displaced. And so in a proposed taxing sale abolition legislation. Um, and so the goal of the legislation that we're proposing is to prevent displacement. So that's displacement of homeowners, displacement of renters that may be paying rent to, to landlords and then, you know, for, for whatever reason. Rent is not then being applied to some of those debts or, and, you know, they're being foreclosed upon. Um, and so there's a lot of off-ramps that, you know, are included in some of the legislation. Um, and it's actually, you know. It actually, from the, the last time that I presented to now, some of the, the taxing legislation has come up. You know, I'll definitely be happy to come back to the community board at a later date to sort of talk through some of that legislation. It looks like it's going to be like seven bills overall that are going to go into sort of this taxing sale reform. Um, so I'd, I'd be happy to come back. But I think, you know, to, to acknowledge some of the, the concerns that came up at the previous meeting. Um, you know, the, the concern about, you know, voting or on a resolution expressing approval for legislation that hadn't come out yet. Uh, I think it's completely valid and I think, you know, could, we could, if, I would be happy to keep. The, the resolution that I submitted um, to the, to the community board. So like include just the, the legislation that we already have the text of and that sort of legislation that's sort of, you know, concepts or, or principles. But, you know, so, but again, I'd be happy to talk about specifics of the taxing sale and how that's how, you know, those bills are working. And to prevent displacement of homeowners and renters who are in these buildings with taxes. Um, a question was asked about how many legislate, legislators are currently co-sponsoring each of the bills? What is the target number of legislators for supporting any? So from last year, so these bills have yet to be reintroduced. Uh, but from last year, the Public Land for Public Good Act, which essentially gave first priority to uh, community land trusts. Similar nonprofits. Um, when the city was disposing of city-owned property that had thirty-three co-sponsors last year. The Community Opportunity to Purchase Act, um, had thirty-two co-sponsors last year. And the Tenet Opportunity to Purchase Resolution, um, had twenty-one co-sponsors. And so as we know, like the um, the FAR or a two-thirds veto-proof majority is thirty-four. So, you know, a lot of these bills were very close and, you know, a veto-proof majority in the last session. And as they're being reintroduced, that's the target that we want to hit for this upcoming session. Um. Last question was sort of, what is the timing of, of all of this, the community land act? How quickly would, would we like the community board? To, to move outward in proving a resolution? You know, obviously the, 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 the quicker the better, but you know, I think. With respect to, you know, what we, what the goal is, um, the goal is to pass these bills this year. Um, so, you know, to. And ideally, if, you know, if we would be able to get sort of an approval of the resolution by this summer. Or, you know, or this fall, that would be great. Um, but, you know, I think it's, we're working on, on your schedule in my respect. Like that the board has a lot of, a lot of matters in front of it. A lot of things going. Um, so, but I think that's, you know, that's sort of the response that I had for questions from last month. Um, and if any other questions came up, then happy to, to address those.
I mean, I think if you're looking for a resolution from us, um. We're off in the summer.
Yeah.
So we're off, we're on the holidays. So we could do it in June.
Yeah.
Or we could do it in school.
Yeah, I mean, June, June better than September, but you know, it's, it's sort of.
Yeah.
Like I, they have did like, we're offline with you and. So we, I think I sent you an initial draft presentation, um, to, you know, like to work on, like, say if you want, that's sort of. Just uh, the bills. Cause there's, well, there's, but it's the four flags, the platform are like the COPA, COPA. Ten opportunity. Yeah, the whole thing. The um, the taxing sale is like a role in different sets of different bills. So if dollar, if those like, in terms of details of that, you might be more comfortable with like, sort of just the. The, the COPA, TOPA ones. Yeah, and I think we could, we could see the.
Sorry. Well, let's come back to it. So you know.
Yeah.
Our next housing land just zoning meeting may be a week after the storm. Because I'm traveling from work in city. We still have different room, but at least hopefully you, you know, will give us, none of it, none of it.
Yeah, it's just.
Any questions? For Cameron on land trust? No. Well, great. We have good updates. Thank you for those. Very, very helpful because we do have some bad actors.
Even nonprofits.
Yes.
Um, yeah, and if anyone has any other questions, you know, feel free to reach out. Um, I'll give my, my email is just literally Cameron dot Clark. Um, I don't know. First name, dot last name. C L A, C L A R K E.
Oh, oh, K E, you have that.
At we act.
Yep, we act.
So if, if any other questions come up, then feel free to reach out, email me and I'll sit around and, you know, modify the language. So generally, can get me.
Okay, all right, good. Okay, sorry, everyone. I was trying to fix the, the fact that you can't see us here. Um, I am connected to the. Yeah, no, and, and I, I double checked and it does say, yep, yep, and I forget and it said meeting hour.
Yeah.
I guess um. I guess I can put it on here. So let's go back to our agenda. Um. Okay. So back to our agenda. Do we have any new, new business this evening? Anyone is dying to bring up that sample. Okay, moving on to old business. Um, and I think we'll probably just run to this considering it is nine thirty at night. Um, please stop me. Um, any legislative. Please stop me, any legislation that we are watching outside of what Cameron was sharing?
Not not today, but sometimes there's something to go with the new forty five X and the new budget deal. Or maybe the new meeting or later on.
What is it?
So I think there there's a recent budget deal thing that I was saying that I think had was like partial good cause and then also like replacement for four four one eight.
Statewide.
Statewide.
What is it? What is the number?
Forty five X.
Forty five X. Okay, for June, okay.
I could also look it back.
Hopefully June will be last night. Any developments that we are watching, any updates that people wanna bring up?
I think the only new update was like the two demo permits for on one twenty fifth street. I forgot which one.
Oh, right.
Like the R two.
Right, so Clayton found that there are two demo permits on one twenty five between, I believe it's Amsterdam and Convent, it's like five twenty five West one two five and five twenty three.
Yeah.
They're two short like warehouses.
Two like, two or three short buildings.
Oh, okay, great. Barry's back. So there were demo permits, both for those.
Yeah, five twenty three and five twenty five, it's like the blue flame front for R seven A.
Um, someone on the phone has raised their hand. Three one seven, go ahead. Someone on the phone.
Liz, Liz, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Liz? It's Barry, yeah, that's the blue flame in the building adjacent, that changed hands, I think, a year and a half or two years ago. And they've been doing general demolition for a while now, but we can expect, I think that segment of the one twenty fifth street rezoning is height capped, but I'd have to double check. But R seven is not super dense anyway, the question is if they acquire air rights from our children's foundation or any other adjacent parcels.
Have you seen, that would be in the, um what is that city website with all the deeds? Finance? Right?
Acris?
Acris? Yeah, I I think Acris, I think Acris does record zoning law mergers.
Right, you wanna check Acris on those two blocks. And actually the building next door, the
For
For a transfer development rights?
To see if it's already.
Yeah.
I see.
Yeah. Good, thanks Barry. Any other developments?
None by me.
Okay, uh, public member updates, Tanya. Jared, are you guys still hanging with us?
Still here, no updates.
You're still at work too. Definitely not your house, okay, all right. Well, thank you, we do have a very robust group of public members. You know, we do encourage people to become public members of housing land use and zoning. You're not officially on the community board, but we consider you part of us and get to vote on that. If you're not a public member, be one tonight. I'm tired. Um, are there any N A T A updates? I mean, there was a, wasn't there a N A T A, was it Manhattan bill change?
Oh, there's, I mean, there's other I don't think anything.
And I just went by there too. Uh, R K O Hamilton Theater Task Force update, we currently are without the chair for this task force, so I don't believe that there are any updates. If you're interested in getting involved in that task force, please send Sydney and myself email. Are there any till for H T F C updates? Morningside Heights Community Coalition. There, Barry, Sydney and I did take a Zoom with I think it was city council, because city council has been reviewing the Morningside Heights rezoning. And there were some questions about two blocks and changing the zoning very modestly. I don't believe Barry, go ahead, you have your hand raised? I don't think there's anything to say there.
That's a legacy hand.
Okay, nice, okay. So anyway, to say that the Morningside Heights rezoning is moving forward, we are in conversations with the city and that will, I don't know if it'll come back in June, but I would think in the fall that will be back with us. Filming TV task force, it's gone. It's just me talking about what we need to do a lot. Did we miss anything tonight?
Oh, losing it, right?
All right. With that, um thanks everyone for joining us tonight. Too many people left, I'll say it one more time. Two questions, Tanya, I don't think you have to be on the community board to be in charge of tasks. It's a good question. Anyone maybe that weekend and we can talk about next month, it'd be good. So if anyone has comments on seven oh one west one thirty five, please send that form. No, all of the pieces of paper are gone from here, so I can collect them, but we will. And thanks everyone for being here tonight and staying so late and all your good questions.
Great job, Liz.
Thanks, God, and good night. My god, too much.
Bravo, Liz.